It being seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is November 12th, 2004, 2024, 7:00 PM in the municipal meeting room. I will start with a roll call from the far end.
Marty Kane.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Roth.
Rich Canong, I am the chairman. We have on the agenda tonight, the approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes from October 15th and October 29th. We have a space for public comments. Then we have two public hearings, one for Birch Park Mixed Use Development and one for Brayley Subdivision. Under old business, we also have Birch Park Mixed Use and Brayley Subdivision. And then for new business, we have 2324 Portland Road Juice Box LLC Packaging Facility. We've got a couple of comments under other business that we need to discuss.
Move that we approve of the agenda?
Tom makes a motion to approve. Marty seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Okay, approval of the minutes for October 15th.
Right, we can't, October 15th.
I'll need to abstain on this one.
Yeah, I was just checking that.
Yep. I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of October 15th as written.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane to approve as submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have, we have four in favor and one abstention. And the workshop on Tuesday, October 29th.
Move to approve as written?
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay, motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty Kane to approve as written. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have four in favor and one abstention. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is open to those of you that have something that you would like the planning board to look at or consider for change at some point in the future, but it cannot be related to anything that's on the agenda tonight. Does anybody have any public comment? Hearing none, we will move forward. It is now 7:05. We will start the public hearings. The first public hearing is for Birch Park Mixed Use Development, a site plan application proposal to create a mixed use development on Tax Map 33 Lot 12B. The parcel is in the DBI, DV2 zones. A 2,400 square foot building will be in the DB1 zone, closest to Portland Road, and will have retail space on the first floor and two, two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. The second and third building will both be near the rear of the site in the DB2 zone. The second building will be approximately 4,500 square feet housing service business offices. The third building at 5,000 square feet will contain a flex warehouse, service business offices, with each one containing a garage and a loading area. The applicant is Birch Park Properties LLC, care of Jeff Rolle, and the applicant's engineer is Craig Sweet PE of Terradyne Consultants. Take it away, boss.
Thank you. You covered, covered it pretty well. Yeah, like, I'm, like, essentially, so we have one building up front, that's gonna be a big huge commercial on the front door, two bedroom apartments on the second floor, and their associated parking. And in the back, both these buildings will be flex warehouses, kind of storage or service building. Third building spaces. Full drive, 24 foot wide, everything creates a gravel wetland center at the whole point of the site. Landscape is gonna be preserved on the side, and put inside step back, and put in the front lawn for the road, and kind of built in as necessary and provided by the landscape architect, very hard work. Landscaping plan. Yeah, happy ending. Questions?
Does, from us? No, because this is the public's, public's chance to talk to you guys.
Yeah, we have to really.
Does the public have any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir. Could you state your name?
Yeah. I got a couple, sirs, just questions I'd like to. So my first question is, is there any idea of what it's gonna be before?
Yeah, so.
Is there gonna be some sort of restriction on what it can be?
So right now, I don't want to, it doesn't want to go to the scale, and there's a couple of items, and then.
Not lobster, right?
No.
Not like it was on.
Are you an example? So essentially.
Chief, uh, is that, is that question with the? Fire protection all been resolved with the chief, has he approved that?
Yeah, the fire protection, the only comment was, uh, was working on for the numbering.
Yeah, then.
Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The proposed project does not impact the quality of surface or groundwater resources.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. The project provides adequate stormwater management facilities and will not produce additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five-year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties.
Second.
Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Tom McGinn. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. No impacts to existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems are anticipated.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor? Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on environmental quality, cr- critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community. No impact to environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community are anticipated.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of the life of surrounding parcels. None of the above nuisances are anticipated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number nine, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal service. No negative fiscal impact on mu- municipal government is anticipated.
I move to approve.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Marty Kane. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor? Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Number ten, that the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Conditions of approval, based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the site plan review application of Birch Park LLC to operate a mixed-use development consisting of indoor commercial recreational facility. Say what? That's what it says. Just got a pen on him. I'm gonna strike out.
Should you say right, commercial?
Right, it should, it should say to operate a mixed-use development consisting of warehouse and residential uses as herein presented contingent upon the following conditions.
I was gonna read it to you guys.
Okay.
Alright, consisting of retail, warehouse, service, and residential uses. As herein presented, contingent upon the following conditions, sorry about that.
Nope, it's quite okay. Would you be able to print that out tonight?
Uh, no, we can sign it.
Okay. The planning board determined that the proposed existing trees located in the front yard area along US Route One Portland Road will be preserved and will accomplish the intent of maintaining a street canopy along the public street in accordance with Section six, four, eight, three of the land use ordinance. Number two, any modification from the approved plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board. Number three, in accordance with Sections ten point seven of the land use ordinance, the applicant shall submit a performance guarantee acceptable to the planning board prior to the commencement of any activity associated with this project. The performance guarantee shall be re- reviewed and approved by the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number four, in accordance with Section ten point nine of the land use ordinance, all the legal rights, privileges, and duties thereof shall expire if the project construction has not been commenced within one year of the approval date, and if the project is not substantially completed within two years of the approval date. The planning board may grant a one-year extension on conditional use review approvals if compelling evidence is presented that the additional time is required to meet federal, state, or local permit requirements or in reaction to market changes. Number five, com- complete the requirements set forth by the fire department prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this date November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Everybody understand? And any comments, questions? Hearing none, and since we have a vote on the floor, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? It is, it is approved. Congratulations. And the next item up for review is the Br- is Brayley subdivision. So we'll, we Jamel? Will we have these next week? Okay.
Sorry about that again.
Oh, no, that, those things happen. I've copy pasted more than my share of mistakes. I've copy pasted more than my share of mistakes. Okay. Let me get rid on the Birch Park. Okay. Brayley subdivision. You, you got the easement recorded properly?
No. We don't really wanna record the easement until we get final approval, because obviously.
Oh, yes, I'm, you have the easement to, to submit.
We have the description for the easement recorded. I think Jamel said that that could be a condition of approval. If you guys approve the project, official approval would be to get the easement recorded. We'll put that on the plan, and then you guys will sign it. So
Okay.
It will be taking place prior to recording the plan.
Well, I just know that that was one of those things that was holding everything up.
So I wrote the description, uh, basically what Ethan will do is we get conditional approval, you know, proceed with myself, controls on the property, proceed with the, the, the body owner, the folks that had easements, and then we'll record that, we'll put that on the page, on the plan, and then we'll record the plan, like after you sign it, obviously.
Sounds good to me. Does the board have any questions for the applicant?
So, from our last meeting, right, we had four items that we had to go take care of, right, well, I believe so. Calvert's had to be fifteen-inch diameter.
Calvert's have to be fifteen-inch diameter on city property, Calvert's on private property can be any diameter that you choose. So, um.
It's my.
Flows down, it's very little watershed for that Calvert, so it's not required to be fifteen inches, because it's not in the right of way. All Calvert's from the right of way have to be a minimum of fifteen inches, but not on our property. So I kept that at twelve. That's what the fifteen-inch Calvert is.
Is that, is that in the ordinance? The reason I ask is that I was of the, under the impression that the Public Works Director had said he wanted fifteen-inch colors.
Yeah, I guess he thought that what the twelve-inch color was a mistake. It was not a mistake. It is a twelve-inch color. There are passing under our private driveway.
All the ones.
Half acre of watershed over to itself.
All the ones that are at the entrance of the road are all fifteen.
Yeah, that's the one.
Okay, by the plan, so. Okay. And then it was.
There is fifteen-inch minimum for Calvert.
Let's see, there was, there was four items based on that I had on, there was that, there was trees to be removed over twenty-four inch diameter, you were gonna identify those in the plan.
And we did go along with the site and back on one tree and entire property that, uh, over twenty-four inches. Along both roads.
Okay.
So we walked, Ethan walked, I walked through the whole area of our development. There's some twenty-two inch vines, but none of them were twenty-four.
Yeah, right, twenty-two is not twenty-four.
And it was a question on determining the driveway width and whether a waiver was necessary.
I think the waiver was granted to Ethan.
Yeah, the waiver still, um, needs to be voted on tonight, but I think it was generally accepted.
Okay.
That I had on the notes was resolving the net zero requirement. The point oh one.
Narrow down the orifice and store some of the water behind the Calvert.
That works.
The two-year.
And you have that, that new data showing the results of that?
I think it's in, it's in the package.
Okay, good.
If you look at the package for this, it's submitted in there.
I recently got the couch.
I just wanna go through the four outstanding items and get them off the plate. I have no other questions, Mr. Jamel.
Okay, does, Jamel, you had something?
Yeah, it's the porch vote on the waiver request. Um, that's noted in the memo.
Well, I'll move. If, if it's time, I'll move that we, uh, grant the waiver for reduction of the, uh, excess width from twenty to eighteen feet.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to grant the waiver to go from twenty to eighteen feet, correct? Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous.
That was the only waiver request, right?
Oh, I had a waiver listed on the plan. I think, I thought they were already all granted. So one was a twelve and a half foot setback, putting interior.
We did do.
That's in the buffer, the thirty feet.
Yep.
So those are all planning for determinations, they weren't actually waivers. Like that in the, in the notice.
So you're saying we, we need to.
Those are done.
Yeah, that's all taken care of.
Okay.
So what's your, your, uh, what do you guys wanna do now?
Well, those, the last item, any, any other outstanding issues? If not, I'll move that we, that we, uh, approve this.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to approve the project as presented. Arundel Planning Board findings of fact, conclusions of law, subdivision review, Brayley Cluster Subdivision, Old Post Road. The applicant submitted a subdivision review application to the planning board in June two thousand twenty-four. The proposal includes a three-lot cluster subdivision containing one detached single-family home and two duplex structures, totaling five dwelling units. The proposal also includes two new driveways and associated stormwater management landscaping utilities and parking elements. The property is split between the rural residential three and the business office park industrial zoning districts with the developed area located within the R three district. The planning board reviewed the project on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, August twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, October first, two thousand twenty-four, and held a public hearing on November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. The planning bo- board held a site walk on July second of two thousand twenty-four. Findings of fact, number one, applicant is Ethan Brayley. Number two, owner is D C B Properties LLC. Number three, location, Old Post Road Assessors Tax Map, twelve lot six. Number four, zoning, rural residential R three or business office park industrial BI. Number five, existing land use undeveloped and vegetated. Number six, proposed land use, three cluster sub- three-lot cluster subdivision with five dwelling units. Number seven, acres, total parcel twenty-one point eight acres. Proposed development area ten point four three acres. Number eight, other, associated office parking spaces, utilities, site grading, stormwater infrastructure, and landscaping provisions. Conclusions of law, the planning board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in Article eleven in the subdivision ordinance as follows. Eleven point one pollution, the proposed subdivision requires a main DEP permit by rural permit approval. This required permit approval has been added to the conditions of the, of the approval below. No other federal and or state permits are required for the project. No anticipated pollution is anticipated for the project. Eleven point two sufficient water, the proposed subdivision is served by onsite individual well systems. Eleven point three, impact on existing water supplies is not applicable. Eleven point four soil erosion, appropriate soil erosion control measures have been provided for the project. Eleven point five traffic conditions, there are no anticipated impacts for existing traffic conditions as a result of the project. Eleven point six sewage disposal, the proposed subdivision is served by adequate private subsurf- subsurface wastewater disposal systems. Eleven point seven, impact on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste. There are no anticipated impacts on the municipality's ability to dispose of solid waste as a result of the project. Eleven point eight, impact on natural beauty, aesthetics, historic sites, wildlife habitat, rare natural areas, or public access to the shoreline. There are no anticipated impacts to the public beauty, aesthetics, historic sites, wildlife habitats, and rare natural areas, public access to the shoreline is not applicable. Eleven point nine, comprehen- conformance with the comprehensive plan zoning ordinance and other land use ordinances. The project is in conformance with the comprehensive plan zoning ordinances and other land use ordinances. Eleven point ten, financial and technical capacity, the applicant has provided evidence of the financial and technical capacity for the project. Eleven point eleven, impact on water quality or shoreline, there, there are no anticipated impacts on water quality as a result of the project. Eleven point twelve, impact on groundwater quality or quantity. There are no anticipated impacts on groundwater quality or quantity as a result of the project. Eleven point thirteen floodplain management not applicable. Eleven point fourteen identification of freshwater wetlands, all existing freshwater wetlands have been properly identified on the plans. Eleven point fifteen stormwater management, adequate provisions for stormwater management have been provided for the project. Eleven point sixteen, reserv- reservation or dedication and maintenance of open space and commonly end facilities and services. The project provides adequate open space, which is proposed to be owned and maintained by the owner of the property since no association will be formed at this time. Eleven point one seven, compliance with timber harvesting standards is not applicable. The planning board grants the following waiver. Subdivision ordinance, section twelve point two, A point three, point D, point three. Low volume access width, the planning board determined that the proposed eighteen-foot wide site access drive was adequate for the purpose of the project and would not hinder the public's health, safety, or welfare of the community.
Jim, you need a motion and a vote on each one of these?
No, only on the conditional use approvals. Which is a good thing. Based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the subdivision review application of D C B Properties LLC to develop a three-lot cluster subdivision with a total of five dwelling units as herein presented contingent upon the following conditions. Number one, the planning board determined that the applicant can reduce the minimum side yard setbacks to twelve point five feet for the side yards interior to the proposed cluster subdivision development in accordance with Section nine point three point twelve point two point E in the land use ordinance. The planning board determined, number two, the planning board determined that the applicant can reduce the minimum lot size to one acre for the proposed cluster subdivision development in accordance with Section nine point three point twelve point two point E in the land use ordinance. Number three, the planning board determined that the applicant can reduce the width of the required buffer strip to thirty feet for the proposed cluster subdivision development in accordance with Section nine point three point twelve point two point P in the land use ordinance. Number four, any modification from the approv- approved plan shall be reviewed and approved by the planning board. Number five, in accordance with Article thirteen in the subdivision ordinance, the applicant shall submit a performance guarantee acceptable to the planning board prior to the commencement of any site activity associated with this project. The performance guarantee shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit in accordance with sec- number six, in accordance with Section eight point three point B in the subdivision ordinance, any subdivision not recorded in the registry of deeds within ninety days of the act upon which the plan is approved and signed by the board shall become null and void. Number seven, in accordance with Section eight point three point F in the subdivision ordinance, except in the case of a phased unit development, failure to complete substantial construction of the subdivision within two years of the approval date of the approval of the plan shall render the plan null and void. Number eight, the final plan should include the recording book, page and, book and page information from the York County Registry of Deeds for the proposed easement located along Old Post Road in association with the site access drive. Number nine, provide the required main DEP permit by rural permit approval. Number ten, application with requirements set forth by the Public Works Department prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. I'm curious, Jamel, and you can help me out. Number nine, the, uh, required main DEP permit. That has not been received yet, correct?
Uh, it's not, I think so.
Cause the clock starts running.
Full application for stormwater, it has to be submitted fourteen days prior to static construction. So, you know, so basically fourteen days before you want to do, do work on the project, you gotta submit this paperwork, which I already filled out.
Okay, but, but the.
They don't get back to you. There's no.
But you'll, you'll get that permit eventually, won't you?
There's no permit, it's just a fourteen-day period.
If they don't respond, they.
They don't respond.
Okay, so, yeah, if they don't respond, there's not, not much we can do. I was just trying to, to make sure I understood in my head, the point being, you have two years from the date we sign this, and if you don't get the permit from main DEP, you can't even start the work.
Again, it's to me submitted fourteen days before they start, it gives them the opportunity to go look at the project. It's stormwater term by rule, uh, so Ethan will have to either do it now, or it'd be fourteen days, it's gotta be fourteen days minimum for that's.
This, this is just one of those silly things that's, that say, well, you have to apply for it in order to be able to start, you have to apply, but we're not gonna tell you if we give it to you.
Right. So certainly when, when we submit it, I guess.
Yeah.
Want to get a copy to.
Yeah, get a copy to, to the, to the planning department so that we have it on file.
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, sure, absolutely.
Okay, gentlemen, ladies, what is your wish? Oh wait, no, we already voted.
Yes.
Now we have to vote, vote.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion about? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I'm assuming Ethan can report that description that I wrote today. I'm heading out for a week, so once I get back, I'll put that open page on the plan, and then we'll drop that off the hand and you guys.
That will make it sometime in December before we get it signed.
Probably, right, right.
Well, we, we have a meeting next week. After that, it's going to be on December third.
December what?
December third.
There, okay, yeah.
Do you have May, next week or two weeks?
No, we don't.
So that should be just fine for me, uh, Ethan should be on the reported, I'll make it open the plan, and I'll drop the plan off the end and show you what you guys sign at the next meeting.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Now, you guys should have noticed that you have a red folder on your desk. This has the information for next week.
Mostly, yeah.
But we still have.
We have one more tonight.
We have one more.
On the back page.
Oh, you're right, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Been waiting patiently.
He's been here waiting patiently. Yes, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four Portland Road Juice Box LLC Packaging Facility Site Plan Review. The applicant is proposing to develop a packaging facility for Juice Box, a vape cartridge online company on the lower floor and a separate business on the second floor that is undetermined at this time within the existing structure on the property. The property is located on Tax Map twelve, Lot ten. The owner is Live Real Estate LLC, represented by Avram Nibling. Did I say that correctly?
Uh, I believe so, that's not me, I'm his agent, Bud Angst with Woodhull and the architect.
Oh, okay, well, I probably would have made a, a mess out of Bud Angst as well.
That's okay. Um, apologies to the board, I did not bring hard copies to print out, I was kinda anticipating being able to digitally project if you guys needed it, but, um, I can bring them, there's a next meeting for a reason.
Yeah, I think, well, we have to.
Yeah, you have the small ones, I know, yeah. I know, and there's obviously nobody else.
So you're gonna be adding, or your client will be adding a second or?
And so we're building out the expansion of floor area and the fact that it's currently, as you can see on the cover page, a dormer, uh, gambrel. So we're going to be full-story second floor, so root, the second floor is coming off the root structure and going up eight-foot walls, new forward, so the expansion of usable floor area just is contained within the existing footprint. Um, but our understanding of the ordinance was that it's still an expansion of usable floor area under the threshold of.
So you're just gonna square it up?
So we have full two stories.
Correct, as on the elevations on the two oh one.
Well, this house has been, this property's been sitting foul, laying fall for.
It's been a while.
Yeah, a long time and kind of going hard, but it could be really good looking if you.
Yeah, um, I think it'll, it'll bring proper use back to the site, it'll bring it out of its sort of dilapidated state, um, hopefully bring some good business. Uh, or at least, you know, keep the, the, uh, property kept up.
Can you tell us what's involved with the, I'm sorry, Paul? What was involved with packaging, creating, you create?
No, so.
Cartridges there?
I'm gonna call my phone, cause, uh, the owner, Avram, actually sent an email to Ann and a few other people earlier today describing it.
Yeah, I, I read what, um, she sent, I just thought in a nutshell, you might.
Yeah, so.
Give us a synopsis.
Yeah, so they don't produce and fill the cartridges onsite. Uh, they are producing the packaging and actually like boxing the previously filled cartridges for a bait pen. Um, so like, I don't know, and I don't buy them, but ten or twenty go into a box, right? And then those get shipped out to a store or bought wholesale online. Um, and they'll have a little bit of a display space for like if you had a marijuana shop and you wanted to come buy their project.
I should, I should inform you that our ordinance does not allow. I should, I should inform you that our ordinance does not allow that. We can only have marijuana in the DB one zone.
But you're not proposing that. It's really just a packaging.
But we don't allow packaging. The only thing we allow is medical marijuana. Production facilities in the DB one zone.
There'll be no marijuana product.
Nowhere.
That's not true, Jared.
That is true. We had a vote on it.
Okay, it says low manufacturing, including low and medium impact manufacturing.
And if you.
The process cited as prohibited uses. And what you just said is not a prohibited use. There.
If you look in, if you look in the, in the conditions of approval. Or, or permitted uses or conditional uses. The only place in any district that mentions marijuana is in the DB one. And other than that, it's not allowed. It's not listed anywhere.
Will, will there be any marijuana?
No, I was gonna say, if I can read verbatim what he sent earlier today, just to kind of clarify, right? This is the owner's words, not mine, I, you know. Um, Juice Box is one of our subsidiaries and tends to use the space for assembling, assembling packaging kits. Our operations do not include handling or filling of cannabis products directly. Use two wholesale gallery and office space. The front area will serve as a gallery for potential business partnerships and wholesale prospects. Addition, additionally, the remaining commercial spaces is just office spaces within that production facility, and this was news to me as he emailed it out, but he says. Additionally, the remaining commercial spaces may be rented to other businesses, some of which may be cannabis related, such as caregivers or ancillary service providers. That I was not aware of until today, but if that part is not allowed, the main project and the main space, the main use of that space. Um, is for the, the. Assembling packaging kits.
Which, the way I see it, it, they could be printing labels.
Oh, I, they can, they can do lots of stuff. I'm just making the point that the ordinance does not allow marijuana. Production.
Right.
It, it allows medical, it allows medical marijuana.
They're not producing it.
Right, we are.
We don't allow the sale of it anywhere in town, other than medical marijuana.
But they're not gonna be selling to walk in traffic.
They're packaging.
They're just packaging it.
I don't believe it makes a difference.
The package is being sent out to be filled, so they're not even. Filling it with, with marijuana on site.
Now, if they're not, if they're not, if, if, if they're not filling it with marijuana on site, we don't have a problem with it.
Right.
Do the chair, I, I would suggest consulting with a attorney before making that determination.
Not bad, yeah. Yeah, if they were gonna be having a display with, with the finished product, then that, to me.
That's completely different.
Yeah.
If all he's doing is putting together cartridges and he's not putting anything in them. I don't have a problem with it. It's if you're filling the cartridges with, then we're violating what the ordinance allows. And I would question whether or not we're violating law because they're not licensed for marijuana. They're not licensed by the state of Maine to do that.
So are the cartridges filled when you package them? I know you're the architect.
Yeah, so just to be clear, not me. I don't, I don't.
Right.
Not filling or doing anything. Um, it, it says in his words, uh, and I wish he had been here for this, but he must have been. Uh, preoccupied with something else, but he says our, our operations do not include handling or filling cannabis products directly.
Right.
In that prop, business, so.
Well, so there.
And my understanding till now was that it is a packaging facility.
Right.
Whether they would be receiving pre-filled.
Which it, which is no problem. It's just that in one of the. Letters that we got. I don't, I don't see it right now, but specifically addressed it, uh. The, the concept of marijuana.
Through the chair, again, I, I would. Highly recommend consulting with an attorney if you have any questions about the use or even pursuit. If you, if you don't feel confident that it's allowed or not allowed, then I'm. I would pause and seek the guidance of an attorney.
Well, that, that's a, a decision that, that the board is gonna have to make. I feel very, very certain of my position. If, if, if they had a license from the state of Maine, that would be different.
Well, I, I wonder if we even have to go that step, cause on the memo we got from, from Ann Todd of, um. It included from, from Mr. Niebling. Um, that they committed to full legal compliance should specific codes or permits be required for cannabis. Related tenants, we will ensure that all necessary steps are taken to maintain. A lawful and regulated environment, and I think what we need to do is just have a condition, there will be. No more marijuana because it's.
Right.
Violation.
And, but that, and, and I don't have a problem with it. That's exactly my point. The information, there is a, something in the letters. That indicated that. Marijuana production may be taking place there, and that's the issue that I'm having. If you want, if, if these are empty cartridges and you put them together and they ship them someplace else and they fill them with cannabis someplace else, I don't care.
So I think the confusion might have been that I didn't know until I was waiting for clarification. In the email chains back and forth, uh, Chief Stevenson had asked whether we would be filling the cartridges there or packaging them, and I said I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
I was waiting for clarification from the owner. Uh, that was his answer that he sent out earlier today. So I would have to stand by what he, he said.
Okay. So that. That brings up the question like, do we move forward with this, or do we get it? Do we get some conclusion on this issue first?
I don't know, but he states pretty clearly that our operations do not include handling or filling cannabis products directly, so. If they are not, if they're pre-filled. And they're not handling cannabis products that are pre-filled.
But it says that an, any cannabis related tenant would be required to adhere to all local state regulations.
Well, so.
Outlined in, in the main medical.
And that would mean that he can't have a cannabis related tenant.
In, that's correct.
Right.
In that facility.
The main operation on the main floor is basically.
They're making parts.
Right, they're putting the kits together, so he might be precluded Jamal from, uh, what type of tenant? That he takes a tenant that, um, has some related business to marijuana. Handling or production.
Yeah, we, when our staff reviewed the projects, we. The material said that it was a to be determined tenant in the building. We were just reviewing based on the low impact manufacturing use they're proposing on the first floor. And whether it's, I, I. I, I guess I have a hard time saying it's a cannabis business when they're really just packaging a certain thing.
No, I think the language is pretty clear. They're describing what's taking place on the first floor.
Yes.
And that isn't in violation of, of anything, but they have to be mindful of what the restrictions are. For the tenant of the second floor.
Agreed.
I, I, so, and that is. That's what you're saying, cause the first floor is not, is in compliance.
I'm saying that. First off, the ordinance does not allow. Marijuana production facilities anywhere other than the DB one zone.
So that means the tenant on the second floor.
They're not in the DB one zone.
Right, so they can't, they can't.
They can't do it.
Tenant.
Correct.
But he's not saying.
Oh.
He is.
No, in fact, he's saying he, he is not.
Right.
It's just that he can't, he can't rent to somebody that is going to.
So, I mean, we have.
If I had to ask that specific question, okay, to. I think it was to Mr.
It was in an email that.
Bud Angst?
Yeah, both of us, right, and I said, I, I didn't know the answer and asked for clarification from Avram.
Okay.
And then he sent that follow up. He sent the email you were all reading from and quoting from, uh, earlier today.
Right, and he said owner to confirm, right, was the.
I said owner to confirm.
That was your answer to him?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and Avram is the owner and he responded earlier today, and I believe you all have that information in the packet from Ann. Cause that's what people are quoting.
I mean, I put a good health, how you been here?
I don't disagree, but yeah. Sorry, what?
You're Mr. Angst?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's totally fine. The board can request a legal review if there's any discomfort with the project. That way, it's figured out and there's no questions.
But again, it could be any, like, like the last applicant. They don't know who they're gonna be, be renting to. And we really don't care as long as they don't violate. The law, and, and that's pretty much the case here, that it really doesn't matter. It's the space and the, the.
I understand, but if he's gonna go forward. Revamping this whole building with the intention of doing that there, and it doesn't meet the requirement and they won't be allowed to. They need to know that before they go spend the money to redo that whole building.
So I just wanna.
Okay. Excuse me, that, the, uh, so if the, um, the burden is then off on them, like, uh. They, they, they cannot have cannabis on presence unless it was a medical facility, that, that's.
And it can't be a medical facility because they're only allowed in the DB one zone. This is in the BI.
So, but what we're talking about here is they, what they want to do on the first floor is, is compliant. With our ordinance because it doesn't involve cannabis. What's the question now is what they're gonna do on the second floor and who they're going to rent to.
I, I think they're knowing that marijuana is not allowed in that district.
I think they should be aware.
Okay.
About the second floor.
About anybody.
Well, and obviously.
Marijuana is not allowed in that district.
Okay.
And not only is it not allowed in that district, the only use of marijuana that is allowed in the town of Arundel. Is medical marijuana. We had, we had a townwide survey done. It's been a while. It's fi, it's five years old. They didn't want anything. No retail sales, no shops, no medic, uh, not medical, no chemical lab testing. They voted everything down by better than two to one. They said the only thing they were willing to go, go along with was medical. And that's how we, that's why we wrote the ordinance the way it is. Cause this was back when the state started doing it. You were on the board then. We had a great discussion about it.
Well, so your client better clarify.
Yep.
Exactly what he could do with that space, the first, and it sounds like the first floor is fine. But he better be very clear on what he can do on the second floor. Because he might have restrictions that would make it the building and that location. Not as desirable as maybe he thought at, at first glance.
Yeah, I think he's got multiple possible business ventures he would put on the second floor. In a follow up email, he mentioned. Selling, uh, locally crafted steam saunas, so.
Until, until this showed up in the. Information that we got from Ann, the thought had never entered my mind that somebody would wanna put marijuana in there. Yeah, Jamel.
I, I guess I would recommend that the applicant like figure out what they wanna do.
Yeah.
Like before we really.
Yes.
Get into it, because. It's just hard to review a project with an unknown tenant on the second floor. How do we know? Well, I guess, I guess. Traffic impacts are gonna be, or like anything real. Well, so if we just, but if we categorize it just as a business, like, you know, I've gone through this in a couple of different. Buildings in, in different towns in the area, Wells, Lyman, Portland, it's, it's treated as a, like that separate business when we. Do determine what would go in there, we'd get a separate state fire marshal office permit, a separate tenant fit out permit where. Zoning, approved, like we're meeting zoning requirements would be reviewed by code enforcement at the time of permit issue. That we are saying that at this moment, it will be something that falls into a business use. We have the amount of parking spots on the property that meet that requirement for business use. The building is not expanding its footprint beyond like what is allowed. Like, does this, does this? Building as is, with the information known, meet all the requirements? It doesn't, if we don't know the exact business going in there, like the warehouse previously didn't know the exact business going into there, but it was okay, like. You know, if he decided that he was going to. Pass medical marijuana products through there down the road, but it wasn't allowed in his zone, that would get picked up in the building permit. Process and say like, nope, not allowed by zoning rights. Um, so. I think that part is to be determined. We would like to get to. The point of being able to build this and even if, if it's, and clean up that site, and even if it's just as a white box. Future, you know, commercial tenant space on the second floor and a packaging facility on the first for his company. I think that's a reasonable request for the board to consider at this moment in time. If, if marijuana. Holding, processing, whatever is wholesale not allowed. I will review that with my client and he could make the determination at that point whether, right, the building, it makes sense to go through reconstruction or not, but it's not. It, it's still a gain in equity for that property, for him to be able to have the approvals to build the second floor and have habitable space as opposed to.
You know what?
Overrun.
What I, I'm, would recommend is, is just. Leaving that language out, just saying that the, the remaining commercial spaces may be rented to other businesses, period.
Yeah.
And, and as long as there's no mention of it, I think, um. I'm comfortable. So to me, it may be. Some of which may be cannabis related, and that was probably the mistake here.
Yeah.
But if that was scratched.
But it can be cannabis related, as long as it's not.
Definitely, I have no problem with it. Yeah, can.
Yeah.
You could be, you could smell all the pipe.
Heroin, we don't care, we just the needles is all they make it.
You could be selling bongs upstairs.
Nothing, no illegal product should be on.
They're hookers.
Hookers, whatever, but you're like a sacrificial lamb tonight.
Oh, I'm fine.
Cause you, we didn't, we didn't ask the guy before you, what, you know, what are you putting in the background? They're gonna have a bunch of businesses there. Okay. It, the issue will become if, if he. Thinks that he's going to be able to put a marijuana facility on the second floor, he needs to understand that he won't.
I think he has zero intention of, of retail selling marijuana in this facility.
Well, no, but, but he may rent it to a client who is going to.
Well, he couldn't though, right? That would be the thing, right? He couldn't, cause that client would need to get a, a, a fit out permit. And the code enforcement office would say at that time.
Just wouldn't be allowed.
Right, you wouldn't get a business license, he wouldn't be able to get his fit out permit, so it would be handled at that.
Yeah.
Should be better off, Justin, say, no, sorry, the town won't let your business in here.
I, that's what he would have to do at that point in time, but, um. Yeah, I think. Listen, the, the project started construction without proper permits. Um, I think. Uh, my client was a bit naive as to what was necessary at that point in time. Construction stopped and they brought us on to help them through the all, you know, all the steps of the approval process here. We are not a sole proprietor, there are, you know, we are an office of eighty. We do a lot of business all of and down the coast of Maine. Um, other business in Rundle, we're not looking to like. Put our, uh, reputation on the line of this, like, we're here for a site plan approval on the new construction of the second floor. Showing that we meet all the requirements of the property to do so for a factory use and a business use. We will then proceed with state fire marshal office approval on the building. For a white box tenant space above and fit it out of the factory space on the first floor for my client's business. Building permits to fall from the town of Rundle after that, and then we have made our client aware of the fact that at this, whenever phase, he decides to. Put a business, whether it's his or a separate tenant entirely on the second floor, he would need to get. A separate state fire marshal office permit at that moment and a separate building permit as well. So we are. I'm wholly in agreement with all of that, um, and just wanna, I'm here to help facilitate. Moving towards a site plan approval at whatever pace we can.
I think the first thing that needs to be done is a formal application needs to be made. With, with, with some plans and stuff so that we can.
Uh, which we.
Have you, we have this, but do we have a formal application?
I believe so. I mean, I filled out the application form.
Um, yes, oh, okay.
I would say the next step should be the waivers and application requirements for this project.
Jamal, do you know what waivers?
Yeah, there.
You go.
Yep, those are on page three of the.
Okay.
It wants a waiver of the boundary, the property boundary survey. Uh, topographical.
Yeah.
Waiver for the topographical survey.
I can address any of those.
The location of existing and proposed utilities. Layout of dimensions and of all existing proposed drainage.
So.
On-site soils.
Again, is, is it worth.
Schematic.
Discussing that, and before we get marijuana issued, uh, to me, I think it finished it. I'm already was moving forward on this.
Yeah, I'm fine.
And then that issue needs to get resolved and.
At a late, well, and it's kind of moot in terms of.
I don't, I don't, I don't see what needs to be resolved. He, the applicant is aware of the fact that they cannot have marijuana.
Yeah. Yeah.
Everything else is, it's. Production facilities are going up on the second floor and doing something. It's just not gonna be marijuana.
Right. And, and they just need to know that.
Yeah, we've told the app, we've told the applicant's agent and he'll.
I think we should make it a condition of approval, but it will be nowhere alive, even though. Even though it's it's a.
It would be redundant, but we could.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't cover everything that they can't.
That's right.
As a condition, right?
Okay.
You know.
It's a lot of waivers.
So if I can address the stuff specific to the overall site, like we're not proposing any changes to anything outside of the buildings. It's just literally the addition of the second floor, all the existing parking spaces are all the parking spaces are on existing partscape. Not trying to change signs, we're not changing sight lighting, we're not changing utilities, it's just the second floor going up.
Yeah.
Are you, are you going to be able to handle the electrical output for the production facility?
We're not, yes, because we're not um when we're not running major machinery into, we're not, it's not a grow facility or anything like that, so. The electrical is heat pumps and lighting and typical receptacles.
And how many employees are you anticipating?
I think we accounted for five.
Oh, okay, so I'm I'm gonna assume a building that size has facilities that are capable of handling five people.
Yeah, yeah, and we accounted for business on the second floor and I believe that was uh on that site plan. I think that was. Let me get to the right, so I just wanna make sure I quote the right amount of parking spaces without speaking out of turn. Yes, a five parking spaces for the industrial use and for the business, one space for two hundred square foot of gross floor areas of fifteen, so twenty overall. And we added uh one accessible space, so we are, we have allotted twenty-one spaces.
I'd like to make a motion on some of the waves, not all of them yet, um but the the first five, all the site plan requirements. That um we grant waivers to. The topographical, the the property boundary, it's it's already an existing site, topographical survey. Um those quotes from the first page, the uh location of existing utilities, that's none of that is changing. And um the layout of all proposed drainage facilities. That's not changing. And identification of all onsite soils, you're not disturbing anything, so. I think for those first five, I I I move that we we approve those waivers.
The only, the only one that I'm. Oh, I would like to get a uh something from the fire chief.
On which one?
On um the location of existing and proposed utilities, including overhead phone poles. And or underground cables, public water lines, gate valves, fire hydrants, dumpsters or waste receptacles. I don't know, I don't know if there's a. I don't know if the water supply out there.
Very wet.
Would be sufficient to to handle a fire in that building.
They're on um.
Does benefit run up through there?
Yeah.
You're on town water?
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't realize you came back up that way, I know Kennybunk stops at the cottages.
No, they have. Uh fire hydrants across the street.
Okay. Yeah, they're pretty far up, they're very expensive.
It's almost down there where uh. It's right after uh.
Near the salvage of metal.
It's salvage, it's next door because behind them is the salvage yard where he was gonna put in.
Well, if if it if it's public, if it's public water, I don't care.
Yeah, and I I will point out the.
But the lot is very wet in itself.
That's not gonna do any good. There's, I don't think there's anything down there, this is not wet.
Ann did say in her email this afternoon as well, though, that the, at this point, the chief has indicated he has no concerns with the three items, including. Brayley subdivision, Birch Park, McHughes Development and two, three, two, four Portland.
Right.
I spoke with him on the phone yesterday or Friday, sorry, as well, and he goes, yeah, he was fine with everything.
I I don't know if he's going to to be satisfied with the hydrant being on the other side of the street. Part of that discussion that we had on uh last week with him was about cisterns and hydrants and where they're located. Uh and he seemed, he seemed to be of the opinion that hydrants should be on the same side.
But he did uh, he just dated today that he uh and corresponded it on behalf of the chief. That he he was all right, he had no problems with.
But does he know where the hydrants are going, the hydrant is?
Hope so.
I would, I would like to assume so, I would also say it would feel, I mean, to. Take the infrastructure to install a hydrant on the on this property for a second story addition would feel like. A lot of responsibility or like a lot of extra scoping. Um accounted for for a a second story addition, I'm not saying it's not warranted, but. Uh or it it wouldn't be beneficial to have hydrants on every site, but um. That feels like, I mean, if he's, if Ann is saying that she spoke with him and he has no concerns. And I had spoken with him and he had no concerns, I would like to think that. We'd be good on the fire chief's point of view, but I'm happy to continue that conversation with him as well.
Well, can I make a recommendation to Tom's uh. Proposals here that maybe we go ahead with those five, but we leave the question of the fire hydrant open until we firm it up and complete the circle with the chief.
Yeah, well, I have a question about being the the property very wet in itself. I mean, it almost has a a pond and and everything else. About your uh um. Your stormwater management, I mean, uh because if it rains too much, it almost floods over at different times. Uh this year you can't tell because you haven't had the rain.
Yeah, but if they're not changing anything outside, Marty, why would?
I'm just saying, I've been down to the property, I know the property, but it's very wet, but it wasn't being used. Because at one time it was a lawyer's office and one time it was an accountant's office. So it didn't have a lot of traffic or anything else in there, and the other thing it was used for was like a rescued dog kennel.
Yeah, I think that was the most recent use that in an illegal apartment, um we're not increasing any impermeable surfaces. We're not expanding the parking lot or the or the building footprint um. So we're not adding any additional stormwater runoff, um if we were, I would. Wholeheartedly agree, we could look at, or we should look at stormwater management, um if I, again, if it's a condition of approval here. And that's something we'll deal with, I just, if since we're not expanding any or adding any additional stormwater runoff. I don't know that that um.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I don't think it would.
I I don't remember this, this is, this piece of property has not come, have gone to the planning board.
It hasn't come in front that I know of in fifteen years.
Well, I I don't ever remember, as long as I've been around, it hasn't come. And that's more than fifteen.
Yep.
So I mean, Tom, you don't ever call it ever coming in front of us.
It it was uh back when it became first became an accountant office, this was twenty years ago.
Plus.
Yeah, that that's the only time, but it hasn't been no change really. Might have been gone from uh an accountant to a another type of.
Yeah, yeah, but what they're saying is.
Yeah.
But then also.
And and this is almost to me, almost the same type, it's not really necessarily a. A big change in use.
Well, that's the whole issue, it's it's a, it's a change in use, which is why they have.
But it hasn't been used for anything in the last, last.
Well, but it's sort of along the lines of the gym we just approved, I mean, he wasn't changing the footprint.
He was just changing the use.
He was changing the use, but essentially everything else.
Yeah, and you know, honestly, when it comes to the water, I didn't realize benefit came that far down.
Does, and and also that that waiver is asking to document the location of all that existing stuff. And maybe.
Well, the fire hydrant was the only thing that I saw, I don't even know if there's a fire hydrant out there.
Hey, I don't think there is, right?
Uh you got uh.
How do you know where the nearest one is?
Timber frame is not too far from there.
Have they put in a hydrant?
Huh, do they have to put one in?
No, timber frame is across the street before.
Yeah.
Because it's it's before uh.
But but do we?
But we didn't, we didn't require them to put in a hydrant.
No.
And that and that.
There is, it's like right across the street, right?
Is there?
Yeah, there is one right across the street. Jamal just looked it up for us, yeah, and that's what I thought the fire chief had said as well, but, okay.
Okay, if it, it's on your side of the street?
Other side.
No.
On the other side.
Just across the.
Cause timber frame's on the other side.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, I didn't hear any second, so I guess. No move on that.
That was, that was my fault, cause I got into the discussion about hydrants and I didn't know where the, you know. Cause cause the ch- the chief was, when we were talking, if there's no hydrants, he's gonna want a cistern, which would have been my whole point. So I, at this point, I don't think waiving it would have been a good idea, cause we'd have to put on on the plan where the cistern is. But if we're not gonna be putting a cistern on, okay, I got no problem with it.
So where are we?
Yeah, I guess I would recommend just going one by one and seeing.
Yeah, might be better to do that.
Okay, so let's look at the first one. Property boundary survey. Do we have any clue? Where the property line is?
Yeah.
That's anybody.
Yeah, my plan is not uh not provided by a licensed surveyor and stamped by licensed surveyor, but it is a property. Property survey that is conveyed with the sale of the property, whether it's a mortgage survey or um other deed, it's just not. A a stamped by a licensed surveyor, um but it, again, for the fact that. We're not changing anything and we are well within setbacks and not like.
Was it originally, um the original one that you took yours from, was that originally stamped?
Uh so it's, you're. It's on G O O two, it's retracement of land shown on standard boundary survey of land, it's just, it's a preliminary version that is not. Transferred from. Uh two thousand and twenty, um and so it was. Again, I think it was drawn up, my guess is for the sale of the property, and it's not stamped at that point in time.
What do we?
It was done by a licensed surveyor, it just wasn't a full stamped plan.
Okay. Again, I guess I don't know why I'm thinking it, just to to raise the roof. To make them go through all this extra cost, get a surveyor in there, it'd be thousands of.
Yeah, it's.
You know, and it's an existing site, um the the your butters in back. I don't know if there'd ever be an issue and.
You know, if 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 he were going to redo. If he were gonna punch out the back wall and put something up, then yeah, you probably need the survey to make sure he meets setback requirements.
Yeah.
The building obviously meets the requirements as it sits right now, so I don't, I don't have a problem with leaving that. Make motion.
Okay, I'll move that we approve that waiver request.
The property boundary survey.
Property boundary survey.
I'll second it. Motion by Tom again, seconded by Paul Green to waive the requirement of a property boundary survey, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
Move right into uh.
The topographic survey.
Grab approving that uh waiver request for the same reasons, nothing's changing.
I get it.
Motion by Tom again, seconded by Paul Green to waive the topographic survey. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Marty.
If we don't know about the water situation, you can't tell about topographic. Uh have you can even plant a cistern or anything there?
But Marty, they're using, nothing is changing in the existing building in uh its footprint.
You know, proposing proposing this.
They're not proposing any changes, so I can't imagine. That the, we're gonna check with the fire chief about the fire hydrant being across the street, but the. The idea that they would need a cistern.
Uh yeah, just.
And.
They, well, the whole, the whole question that the chief will have is what's the travel away distance? To the, to the hydrants.
And this survey is really just to show the grade of the hills and.
Well, I I think if none of us have really been out there. I mean, we have nothing to look at, the only good thing about the boundary survey is. Because you got the junkyard, we know where the back bins are, and then there's. It's proven by a point in the survey for the salvage yard there.
But all going by the the application at hand with with their plan, there's there's no. Changes at all, so that based on that, I think we should grant the waiver.
I agree.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? It is unanimous.
And the next one maybe is worth skipping for me, I'm not gonna make a motion on that one. It'll create location of everything, including the fire hydrant, I'll skip that one, but I will make a motion, we approve of the location layout. Dimensions of all drainage facilities, et cetera.
Which one?
The second one on page twenty.
Identification layout and dimensions of all existing and proposed drainage facilities. Accompanied by a detailed drainage calculation, signed and sealed by a professional engineer licensed in the state of Maine.
So uh Jamal, is that normally the process when you're rehabbing an existing building? That you require everybody to sort of reinvent the wheel in terms of what's. In the building and identifying it all and whatever.
It definitely depends on the application, I would say for a site that's not. Or a project that's not proposing any site changes, I think. It's typical of of waivers requested for stormwater management, if they're not making any changes. No requests?
Yes.
Yeah, if there were problems uh with the existing site, maybe we pick it, we shouldn't grant it, but.
But nobody would, unless we do a sidewalk, nobody would know.
That's what I'm saying.
But. It's outlets.
But would a sidewalk really tell us, are we?
Public.
Wouldn't you need a professional to to identify some of these things that are. Really?
Well, okay, the public works department would would know if their their cover failed or or if it was overflowing or something. And uh. Again, that that could be another five, ten thousand dollars just to have someone survey all that.
You could do the sidewalk and then decide, you don't have to decide everything.
Yeah, I think we can, we can come back on that one.
All right.
After we do the sidewalk, the next one down.
I'll I'll uh retract my motion on that.
Okay.
Withdrawn.
The next one down, identification and location of all onsite soils derived from a median intensity soil survey. I got no problem waiving that.
I I would agree.
Cause even if we tell him to go out and get a soil survey, all it's gonna do is tell us what kind of soil there is.
And for what reason?
Right. Well, we could get tatted, he could tell us about non-booms.
Right, but they're not changing, right, they don't have all year, um they're not changing the footprint of the building, yes, we have, we don't have.
Okay, so the next one down. No, was there a motion on?
Oh, yes, but make a motion on that.
Okay, I'll I'll make the motion that we grant that one, on the onsite soils. Survey, the third one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Susan to waive. The identification and location of all onsite soils derived from a medium intensity soil survey, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Right, any opposed? It is unanimous.
You know. We, this is only a preliminary review.
Right.
We've never done waivers under a preliminary review, I mean, uh I think we're setting ahead of ourselves. Because. Totally.
Good point, Marty.
Well, that we we were just looking at the ones that were specific site plan requirements.
I'm just saying.
No, I un- I understand.
I mean, we keep everything by regular routine, this is not our regular routine.
I think the applicant's requesting feedback from the board and whether you're comfortable with some of the waiver requests. If I need to go get a survey, I need to know that it's gonna be.
Yeah, but we don't have to decide.
Yeah.
Get somebody out there, uh so yeah, getting that feedback is valuable information at this time.
So Marty, because it's an existing building and they're not changing the footprint, a lot of what they're asking. In terms of feedback, I don't believe is unreasonable and requires. I I think a sidewalk is in order, but I don't think that. We're waiving our responsibility by giving them uh. The feedback that they need to know that these things are not going to be on their plate in order to get this project off the ground. I mean, I think we should look at things. The building has been empty for a long time. And there may be certain basic things within the building that do need to be upgraded and improved. And so the sidewalk might tell us that, but some of this other stuff. It's just. It's overkill for this particular request, in my opinion. Um.
I don't even remember what the building was built on. If it's on cement blocks or if it can't be a foundation. I mean, uh, it doesn't matter.
But regardless of what it was built on, he's not changing. They're not changing.
I realize that, but I'm just answering the question.
But the to me, that's the reason that we can look and say a couple of these things. The property boundary survey. You know, it it he's not anyplace close to the line, so we don't have to worry about setback. So I don't I don't see a reason not to waive it. Already approved all of those, right?
Yeah.
Well, there's there's there is one more that I that I don't think we should grant. No, we're just going to do the site plan requirements. When we get into doing, uh, there's some written submission requirements. Uh, and we'll be able to handle those at the same time. But I mean, for tonight. Just the site plan requirements because he needs to know those. Uh, when he puts, when he finishes putting everything together, it comes back to us.
But uh hand in hand with that would be uh. For the. Written submission requirements, number five onsite.
Onsite soil investigation.
Unless it's so it it's.
And I and I think. We've already told him he doesn't need to do it.
Separate waiver, though.
Well, no, no, I understand that.
We're requiring that he does it unless we grant the waiver. He has to go, even though we've granted the other as a waiver. It's this is a separate requirement.
Okay.
So I I'll.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Well, hang on, we got to do number seven. Schematic of out elevation of a proposed sign. The sign has to be changed. It has to conform. Better to the ordinance because you've got to have the island in there with the with the nine eleven address on it. So he's going to have to give us a new sign.
TBD at a later day.
Yeah, is there? So I guess my uh thought on the sign was that the the location and size and structure of it would not be changing, but the actual. Information on the sign obviously would be updated and I assume there would be a sign ordinance and a and a permit for that. Approved by code enforcement on a future date, but the like that the site plan and planning board more so would be about. Lighting of the sign, structure of it and location, which would be remained unchanged.
Okay, well, if if nothing, if none of that is changing.
It's just the information within the sign, right? Or the panel on the sign itself and we would have to obviously comply with sign ordinances within. Around the and that would be done again.
You need a separate permit.
Need that separate permit that because that that has changed since way back.
Right.
Before it gets signed, before they sign off on everything, before they they get their. Uh, occupancy permit, whatever, they have to have. The sign approved and it has to be.
So that would have to be all put on the uh the plan.
On the building permit application.
Yes.
Yeah, on on the 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 site plan, yeah.
Um, okay, so on your site plan for review or on the building permit application, which is a separate set of drawings.
The answer to that is yes.
To both.
It would be both.
You okay, you want the the new sign for the new businesses?
Truly just to document what's there already.
Okay.
Yeah, where it's going to be.
Yeah, I mean, the location is noted on the site plan. Um, so. Uh, and so drawn to a scale. Okay, we can take a photo and get the. Right thing down. Okay.
Okay. The the next one under written submissions onsite soil investigation, we already said you don't have to do it.
What about the stormwater drainage calculations prepared and sealed?
Can we tell you that?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
That's the next one.
The the onsite onsite soil investigation, we've already said. That we don't want. The onsite work done.
Right.
So we can, we can, we don't need to approve it. Uh, we approve the waiver, but not the.
We approve. I think we have to. Uh, it's a separate.
It's a written submission.
Oh, no, no, it it is, but we.
I'll move that we.
He's asking to waive that we waive that so we can waive it. Because that's the same.
We have to move and vote on that.
Yes, because this one's a written.
Right, so I'm going to move that we uh approve that waiver. It it is not required.
The onsite soil investigation report?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to waive the onsite soil investigation report by a licensed site evaluator. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. The next one is the stormwater drainage calculations prepared and sealed by a main licensed civil engineer. And I think the same criteria that we've used for most of the others, nothing's changing.
Yeah.
Nothing external is changing. A lot of internal changes, but nothing externally, so.
Or did decide to go on a sidewalk or. Stormwater management plan.
That's.
Yeah, that's. Yeah.
Yeah. Wouldn't hurt, I guess.
Maybe just leave that one.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll leave that one and then there are two more. Uh. Market study prepared by a qualified research firm and fiscal impact assessment. I cannot remember in fifteen years ever having had anybody do those.
Not even for the old Arundel market.
Or even the new one.
I don't remember ever having. Had either one of those uh studies done.
No. If it was, I don't remember. Again, it it's no, it's just one building with raising the roof and if it doesn't work, buying a different tenant. I'll make a motion. We uh grant that waiver.
Both of them. The market study and the fiscal impact.
Right.
For both of them, they yeah, they go.
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to waive both the market study and the fiscal impact assessment. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Those were for like if someone.
I I do have one question for you, Mr. Chairman. I. No, we talked a lot about the waiver on the sign, but I didn't ever hear anybody make a motion to waive it.
Think it was determined that I need to add an elevation to the site plan.
He needs to put it on the site plan.
Okay. All right.
Have need to be waived.
Yep.
If you want to expand the building or do anything beyond a footprint.
I have no desire.
No, I understand that, but you're inclined, which understands that once. He or she does that, if a whole bunch of other things.
Yeah.
All of a sudden become relevant that are no not relevant now.
Yeah, uh, correct. It was I understand. I mean, truthfully. Yes, we fully understand that. Um. I didn't think I don't think any of us thought that a second floor expansion would be. Fully this involved moment either, but um we're here to do it all, but understanding that nothing else will go on beyond the footprint of the building.
Okay, let's let's look at. A sidewalk.
Yeah.
It it's dark.
I vote for Saturday. Because it's dark any other time of the day.
We won't be able to do this this Saturday, but I can. Do next week.
Yeah, I can't do it this Saturday either. I've got an appointment at nine AM.
Um.
Um, unless we could do it. Evenings would is next one impossible because it's dark by six.
So dark.
Dark by forty.
Dark of thirty, yeah. Yeah.
Got to be a Saturday.
Well, it's the twenty third.
I'm good on the twenty third.
Twenty third.
What is the twenty third?
The Saturday.
I'm fine with that.
Make Saturday.
Saturday, the twenty third. What's a good time?
What Thanksgiving?
Yeah, it'd be the week before, Saturday before Thanksgiving. Time?
Yeah.
Um.
Nine.
Nine.
Nine o'clock.
Me. Nine, you're well.
We might work for you guys.
You know, if someone can make it.
If, yeah, I I mean. It's. I will have to be there. I'm sure I can make something work.
Okay, so well, then I'll.
It's it's required that one of us be out there.
Somebody has to be there.
Yeah, all right. Uh.
Can't go to like take on to somebody's house, nobody home. Tell your employer, he has to be there.
Huh?
Tell your employer, he has to be there.
Yeah, that's what we're here. Uh, that's fine. Nine is fine. If there is any chance you all would want to do we earlier. I would be glad to do that, but. Uh, my daughter does gymnastics at nine and my wife's pregnant, so she's not.
We're.
Thirty.
I could do I could do eight.
I would need to do like. I'm coming from born. I would need to do it like eight to get back, but if nine is what it is, it's fine. I can make.
I could do earlier.
I can do eight because I'm going to be awake. I'm going to be awake and I have a lot of coffee in me.
How about later?
Later work will you better?
Yeah, really just like, you know. Trying to cover my wife.
What time are you done with gymnastics?
Ten, I could be down here by ten forty, I would imagine.
Say eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll do it at eleven.
Sure, that works.
Good. Okay, we need a motion to all make it. The move uh schedule a sidewalk on. The twenty third at eleven o'clock.
Weather permitting.
Yeah, it's snowing. If there's a blizzard, we might.
I'm gonna say.
We got a second on that anywhere?
I'll second that.
Motion by Tom McGinn, seconded by Susan Roth to have a sidewalk. Uh, at twenty three, twenty four Portland Road Juice Box LLC. At eleven AM on November twenty third, weather permitting.
Great.
Well, you got a lot of information anyway.
Yes, we did. It was a productive evening.
You need to vote on that?
Yes, I do.
Just for curiosity at the same time.
Thank you, Paul.
Do you want him to mark the if he can find any of the posts? The pins? Property pins? Just for viewing till the end of the month, late dawn.
Is there? Uh.
I mean.
Any discussion on the sidewalk? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Right.
Hi, anyone opposed? It is unanimous. The good news is that we only need three people for a sidewalk.
Four, if you count me.
Yeah.
Yes, four counting the applicants agent. Five counting the applicant.
I'm good to go.
Think so.
Good to go.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now. December seventeenth, you've got the you've got the packets for next week. So don't forget next week, we have a meeting.
I will not be here on December seventeenth.
Okay, on December, well, we're we're not going to have a meeting on December seventeenth because there's a special election.
Oh, okay.
For uh school board re.
Okay.
Okay. So we're looking at. Having it on December tenth. As opposed to Christmas Eve. Yeah, Jemel.
I can now make the December third meeting, but I can still provide. Uh, review memo.
Okay.
Be independent. I have a conflict.
I'm not, I'm not. At this point, I'm not sure if we even have anything to go on there.
Yeah.
I'm hoping these I'm hoping these guys will be able to get back to us by then.
Just want to let you guys know.
Okay, I appreciate it. But yeah, it looks it looks as if uh December tenth is going to be. The date. And if. I know this is going to be the one, the one that's coming in next week. Oh. Is is in it's in auto place. He's, yeah, he's moving to another location and he needs he needs some stuff from us. Beforehand, and we're probably going to have to do a public.
Hearing.
To to do a public hearing. We're going to try to get the public hearing done. By the third so that we can go forward. So is evidently the he's in the middle of a purchase and sale agreement and the sale is scheduled early January.
That's Bruce's auto?
Yeah.
He moved in the same.
He's moved. He's moving to another location.
Where is he now?
I'm not sure where he is right now.
It's right where uh. Wait, go up Pullen Street, you know where Pullen's is. He's just up.
Right up. Oh, that's right, yeah.
The gun ammunition place.
Yep. And he want he's moving, I think it's directly across from, it's not weird, it's there's there's. There used to be a glass shop right on the corner with a bunch of bays running down behind it. And he he's looking at buying that entire building and moving in now.
So. I do a lot of business with him. I'll. Announce that at the meeting as well and make sure nobody has any hard spots but me. Sit again on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Like, you know, if you if you want, if it, yeah, I I'll have heartburn. I don't know who the guy is. I I.